How's you doing?
I get a fifteen minute break between meetings. That's my law.
First, we'll have the call to order, and then we'll have the invocation by Councilmember Vince Maggio and the pledge of allegiance by Chris Smith. Would you please rise?
Please.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry. We're gonna have the prayer by Justin, I mean by Justin Hager.
Oh.
Fire chaplain.
That's me and my Catholic buddies. We'll go. We can do. We can handle it. Let's pray. Father, I just thank you again for this day. I thank you for these men and these women who are just so committed to serving the city, and we thank you, God, for their commitment. I ask you, God, to give them wisdom, guide them as they make decisions, and remind them that we love them as a community, and that most importantly, God, you were there to walk with them through it. We thank you so much for this day. Again, I ask you to keep your hand on them. Let them know how loved they are and how much they're appreciated. We thank you for your love and for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Irwin? I mean, I'm sorry. This is an old list. Mr. Hammond's?
Here.
Mr. Darby's absent. Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
We'll approve the minutes of the December twenty first, twenty twenty one regular meeting.
So moved.
Start it.
Any questions from the audience on this? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Smith, did you vote?
Uh, yes.
Right. Motion carries.
Uh, we'll approve today's agenda. Any changes?
No, sir. No changes today.
So moved.
Second. Any questions from the council? From the audience? From the audience? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Ceremonial matters?
Lynn Bryan, Director of Keep Bossier Beautiful.
Okay, good deal. Thank you for letting me come and make this presentation today. I'm honored to be here. I want to share with you a little bit about what we've done in two thousand and twenty one and what we plan to do in two thousand and twenty two. I'm gonna start off with our mission to end littering, improve recycling, and beautify our communities. And I want to give you a little glimpse of litter in our nation before we go too far. In two thousand and twenty, Keep America Beautiful completed the largest national litter study ever done, and they discovered that we have fifty billion pieces of litter in America. Fifty billion pieces, and out of those fifty billion pieces, nine out of ten are four inches in size or smaller. So we have a big problem in our nation. We've also added in the last two years from Keep America Beautiful two hundred and seven million pieces of PPE to our communities and our waterways. We've got a big problem in our nation. It's not just in our parish, but it's in our nation. But working together, we can solve that. So what I want to do is share with you a little bit about not only what the city is doing, but what other agencies in our parish are doing to help us get rid of litter. We had our largest group of volunteers that worked with us this last year with Operation Clean Sweep under the leadership of Sheriff Winnington. We're very pleased to have that project, have had that project, and looking forward to working with him again this year for another project. We have worked with the Property Standards Department at the city to clean up the old Albertson Shopping Center. This is what it looked like the first part of last year. And this is what it looked like last fall. And it's pretty close to looking like that right now. So I want to say thank you to the city for doing the heavy lifting on that. Property Standards Division has done a great job. KBB volunteers have installed ten trash receptacles at bus stop benches throughout the city. We have ten more to install once replacement parts come in. We are also going to label those trash cans with a nice label to remind everybody to keep Bossier beautiful. We've been proud to partner with Wade Rich and the mayor for our first Interstate twenty cleanup. It was short in duration, but boy, did it bring a lot of results. Nineteen tons of debris were removed from our interstate, and we're looking forward to our next cleanup project, which is already in the works. Sheriff Winnington, under his leadership, inmates picked up over two hundred and thirty-one thousand pounds of debris. The Bossier Parish Police Jury responded to over thirteen hundred requests to pick up all types of debris, yard debris, tree debris, illegal littering. And now on to recycling. One of the things that we're super excited about is keeping this material out of our landfills by enhancing recycling. This is a picture of the first ten bales of cardboard that has been recycled at Bossier Max. It's a brand-new program. Bossier Prison's recycled the first in our area, perhaps the first in our state. So another feather in our cap for including recycling into corrections. We're super excited about this. And we're going to be adding a metal baler to also recycle metal. So we're looking forward to doing that. We've got a lot of other recycle programs that I don't have time to tell you about now, but recycling is really helping us to reduce waste costs and waste hauling removal. We started several programs, including our beautification contest in partnership with the Bossier Press Tribune, the Northwest Master Gardeners, and the Greater Bureau of Economic Development. And our first winners this year were Citizens National Bank. We're all about doing anything to encourage people to beautify, to clean up, to make our parish look better. We were partnered this year again with the City of Bossier and Mayor Chandler's office to provide a very special ceremony for our twentieth anniversary. We had a sponsored mayor's breakfast in his conference room. We had some of our leaders there and including our Air Force leadership, which we're very grateful for. Our biggest turnout that we have had ever, that we believe, over two hundred and fifty people in attendance to help us remember those who have given their lives for this country. And we were super pleased to have provided for us by the Air Force a B-52 flyover. We've added sixty-two bricks engraved with the names of family members and friends to Liberty Garden. And we've partnered with the chamber, the Bossier Chamber, to enhance our gateway signs. We have scrubbed and picked up garbage and planted. And we've also put together a committee to look at some capital improvements to improve our gateways because they're very, very important, not only for those that visit here, but for us on a daily basis. We ended the year with an honor to receive the President Circles Award for the third year in a row, plus a nice check for five hundred dollars from Keep America Beautiful. And these are some of our twenty twenty one stats. I'm most grateful for the over a thousand volunteers that donated six thousand hours of time. The value of those donated services was over a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So that's a very good return on investment. And we're very grateful for all of you guys who have participated, because I know a lot of you have, and for those of you who've sent crews, too. Now on to twenty twenty-two. We'll kick off our year with our first project this Saturday. We will be planting fifty bald cypress trees on Swan Lake Spur in the areas there where you see those green blocks. The red blocks are where we planted thirty-five trees there last year. And some of you in this room were with us, so thank you for being a part of that. It's not too late to register for this Saturday's event or sponsor, if anybody wants to sponsor. We just think that in a few years, that that is gonna be such a beautiful enhancement to have eighty-five cypress trees there as you enter on Swan Lake Road. So we're excited about doing that and hopeful that the weather holds out for us. And we are also planning a e-waste event. We've tried to get this on our calendar before, where we are recycling electronics, offering to our residents the opportunity to recycle electronics safely and free of cost, because it's not free to recycle electronics. And so we're excited about doing that. This company that we're partnering with, they refurbish these electronics, and then they sell them to veterans and low-income families. We'll also be celebrating Love the Boot with Keep Louisiana Beautiful the week of April the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, a statewide movement. Every parish in our state will be doing something to enhance our state that week. And we're hopeful to have an activity every day that week. Love the Boot, Don't Pollute. That's our slogan. And this is a few other things that we're gonna be doing next year or this year, and I just want to call your attention to two of them. We have been very honored to receive a nine thousand dollar grant from the John and Alta, Alta and John Franks Foundation to enhance our website and also create an electronic newsletter. And we are looking for a way to provide a mobile classroom to teach litter education to our kids. In two thousand and sixteen, the state mandated that litter education could be, should be taught in our schools. We want to enhance that with a mobile trailer where we can just pull up to a school. We can rotate all the fifth grade class out there. They can come, and we'll have a standards-based curriculum that we will teach them. And then we'll use that trailer as well for events. And when we're not using it for events or classrooms, it'll be parked in strategic places as a mobile billboard around our parish. So if you guys know somebody who has twenty-five grand that they would like to invest in a very worthwhile project, we would love to talk to them. So that concludes my presentation to you guys. I want to offer an opportunity to answer any questions or any feedback from anybody who might have anything for us. I want to say how grateful we are to partner with you. Thank you for your support, and thank you for providing a way to enable us to do this. Anybody have anything for me?
Thank you, Ms. Bryan.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Thank you for what you do.
All right, Mr. Rocket? With the Greater Bossier Economic Development Foundation.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, council members, mayor, judge. Phyllis, thank you for having me. I am here to talk about a good challenge. So over the last fifteen years or so, we have done very well in our industrial parks. We have had Commerce Industrial Park, which has sold several projects, and Viking Drive Industrial Park. And that challenge is that we've been selling out of land. And we are down to about twelve usable acres in Viking Drive Industrial Park today, which I have a couple of prospects who are looking at it, which doesn't mean they're coming in, but they are looking at it, and it's being marketed, so we have some attention on that. And we're agreed with the parish to hang on to the thirty acres in Commerce Industrial Park as the last solid piece of property that we have for any big user that might come in our area with a large number of employees. So that being said, over the last couple, three years, we've been looking for what that next expansion for light industrial park looks like in the community. And we have identified about twenty-five, plus another six acres, at the end of Whitehurst Street. That is, at the end of Highway eighty, behind JPS Realty, the Swepco substation, Thrifty Liquor, right there. At the end of that street, the parish has about fifteen acres. The Oden family has about twenty-six, and Oden, in partnership with another company, has another seven additional acres right there. And then there's about a thirty-acre tract behind that that's in an estate. So I've been beneficial to a lot of wisdom prior to my time. So over the years, when we sell land in our industrial parks, we put all of those dollars back into an industrial park fund. So that fund was created in order to buy land when the time comes, and I think that time has come. We're looking at the opportunity to go ahead and purchase from the Oden family this property and the Oden family and the Mayfield Properties together to get that thirty-six-plus, give or take acreage, and then potentially add that to the parish's fifteen next door, which was to be used for the former juvenile detention facility. And then, again, there's another thirty acres behind that that's in an estate, but we're not addressing that at this point. So what I'm here today to talk about and ask any, and answer any questions you may have is to utilize that fund. It's about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund currently. I'd like to use about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and GBEDF would contribute the balance of that, plus prepare the property, meaning any kind of wetland studies. I think before you is a property evaluation that we pay for, some other issues that, just to get the property ready to go. We've been negotiating since earlier this year, and now we're down to that final step of actually going ahead and going to contract. So I guess that's what I'm kind of asking the body here to get that endorsement. The property will be titled, as is all industrial park properties, in the parish's name, and the property fund is actually in the industrial park fund is actually managed by the parish as well. But since the property is in the city and you all do have a partnership with the parish on our industrial parks, this is what we're here to discuss and answer any questions you may have on this potential. Did I put everybody to sleep?
Guys, any questions for Mr. Rocket?
Let me tell you what's really good about this property also. There's already a water and sewer line on the edge of it, so we didn't have to go in there and create that. The city, some years ago, in partnership to put another project in there with the parish, redid the road. There's sidewalks. It's brand-new asphalt and concrete curbs. So it's already zoned I-1. I'm glad Carlotta's here. Out of the overlay district, Carlotta, correct? We've talked about that. So after you start looking at it, things just kept falling into place. Questions, concerns? Highway eighty, if you're familiar with the JPS Realty, just between Bipsy and the VFW. It'd be on the north side of the road. Whitehurst is a T-road that comes into Highway eighty. You've got Thrifty Liquor, which would be on the east side, JPS on the west side. And straight down that road at the end would be where the parish was gonna put the juvenile detention facility, and that road does a dogleg. And at the end of that dogleg is about that twenty-six, plus six more. And I say that twenty-six, that's the solid cleared piece we're looking at. But to make the deal happen, we had to buy another adjacent, which is already pre-zoned, seven acres next door. So we're doing that as part of the deal. And then the Skunover family has his estate, another thirty acres that separates it between that and Hazel Jones Road from the end of our property, or what we're looking at considering.
Rocky, is it a, is it a twenty-six usable acres? I mean, I mean, you know, like I do in development, is it twenty-six usable acres?
It's gonna, there'll probably be majority of that. We're still, we're running one last test with the wetland study, and I think that's gonna come out really good. We already looked at that.
That's what I was anxious to ask. I mean, is there wetlands that run through it or anything like that?
There's a borrow pit on it. There's arson wetlands associated in the backside of it. It may come into play where it might be beneficial for us. So twenty-six usable. I think we'll look at a high number of that, but I don't think the whole thing will be usable. Hey, Phyllis, do you mind going back to that one just a bit? The overall photograph. Come down and look. The easier picture, yeah, please. That's the main tract. The borrow pits to the right, you can see. If you look, the corner of the property, I guess it would be the southwest corner of the property, and you come down a little ways, if you'll see, right there, yes, ma'am, that's the additional seven acres we're buying as part of this, too. That's also zoned I-1 as well. They zoned that some years ago. And you can see where the water and sewer come into the site. And you've got a substation there also, so at the end of Whitehurst. So most of my request that I get for economic development is between three, five-acre tracts and for light industrial, and that's what we're running out of. And so this one, I've already actually showed this to a guy last week to see if it might fit his needs. So I'm already kind of marketing it, but I'm also needing to do that. We're not trying to compete with existing landowners. Let me say that first. We're trying to spur activity. Our mission is to create job opportunities and investment. So hopefully, if we do that, other activity will follow.
So what do you need from us today?
I believe I'm going to need an endorsement to spend those dollars from the industrial park fund, because there is a partnership, tacit partnership with the parish who manages that fund, even though those properties may be co-owned in some ways from industrial parks in the past. So I don't know the procedure on that.
Can't do anything today on it.
It's not today, correct. I think maybe next.
Do we need to get with the parish?
This is informational, Mr. President, at this point, and then the next phase would be y'all do a resolution. Is that right, Judge?
It would be an ordinance if we're gonna spend money, approve money that we have put into this fund from the sale of other property. It would have to be a first reading and a second reading, and do it by ordinance for a set price, and we already have the property description.
You heard it from the attorney's mouth.
Sir.
Said you heard it from the attorney's mouth.
I'm good to go.
Guys, y'all have any questions for Mr. Rocket?
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. Happy New Year, too.
All right, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to approve report of change order number two for the Swan Lake Ball Field Restrooms Clifford Amon with an increase of fifty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents for a total contract price of five hundred fifty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, we talked about this last time. Do y'all have any questions about this? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate seventy thousand dollars from Fund four-nine-five dash twenty-fifteen LCDA bond to contract with Tyler Technologies, Inc., to provide additional software configuration and training. Final reading.
So moved.
Second. I had Mr. Bill was gonna come talk about this, but Roddy, this is yours, right?
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience?
I got a question for Roddy. Roddy, with this software, that's gonna be able to, for contractors to do everything online with y'all in the near future on that?
Yes, sir.
Permits everything?
We're slated for July one to go live.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience again? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare the completion of the Barksdale Water Main Abandonment Project by Pulley Construction, Inc., at a total construction cost of two hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, including change order number one, in the amount of fifty-six thousand, nine hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-three cents, and amend ordinance one-twenty-six of twenty nineteen, leaving a surplus of funding for its balance. Final reading.
So moved. Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to replace the chlorine scrubber media for Bossier's water treatment facility at a cost of eighty thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund twenty twenty-one budget to appropriate a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for construction and right-of-way acquisition for drainage improvements along Parkway Drive and the Elm Grove Ditch. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the council? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached Louisiana Technical Research Institute Joint Cooperative Endeavor Agreement with lease between the City of Bossier City, Louisiana Tech University, and/or its affiliates, and the Parish of Bossier. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Tommy Chandler to execute the attached access and maintenance agreement with Brookshire Grocery Company for maintenance and access for a proposed drainage line. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Melissa Cantrell. Location thirty-four oh eight Industrial Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests zoning amendment from I-1 Light Industrial to B-three General Business for a proposed bar.
Counsel, any questions?
We're out on industrial, is this?
I need a motion and a second to start the session.
So moved. Second.
It's back over by the health department. It's, there's a long strip. It's back over by the health department, Carlotta, with MPC, but it's back off in a large part of industrial property, and it's always been a bar, but their conditional use for their alcohol and their zoning had lapsed. So that's why we're here before the council.
Is it in that, like, storage, where the storage buildings are right there at the front?
Yes. It's along that strip. Yes.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Thank you, Carlotta.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Liliana Avajah. Me, Mercado LLC. Location sixteen thirty Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests conditional use approval for the sale of low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, I got one more for Carlotta. I'm sorry. Where is this one on Barksdale Boulevard?
If you're going toward the East Bank District, it's on the left-hand side. There's a little strip center there, and they're taking up that whole strip.
Oh, okay. Okay. Used to be a little grocery store or something?
It was multiple individual suites, and they took over the whole space for market and a little small restaurant.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, petitioner Jay Shaw and Hyton Patel Viamel Hospitality. Location one thousand one Gould Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests conditional use approval for a proposed multifamily dwelling complex in a B-three general business area.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm full of them today, Carlotta. I'm sorry. Is this, is this the old Residence Inn?
Is that the name? Yes. Yes, he's gonna convert it.
Right next to one of the biggest bars in Bossier City?
Correct.
It's mildly concerned you're looking at putting a, you're putting a, you know, multifamily residence in there right next to that is, would be my, is my only concern about it.
And I think he has an increase in long-term tenants, especially when COVID and other things came along. They just needed long-term stay, and this is more short-term. So he's gonna gear it towards more long-term stays.
Yeah, I mean, kids running around at night, and you, you got that going on right next door to you. I mean, how do you, how do you control that?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. We have the fences there, and there's no any way to get across the fence towards that nightclub. There's no any other, this being a hotel since, like, long-term. And this property, it was more demand for the long-term guests staying there. So that's why we're converting to the daily guests to the long-term guests. It's been there since a long time.
Is it, is it still gated? I remember way back when Residence Inn used to be gated.
One side is gated, and other side, all the fences. There's only one way to get inside there. We close the door.
So it will be, will be a closed gate at night?
Yes, in the nighttime. And there's no way to cross the fence, because almost six, seven, six feet tall fence covered from the property already there.
This was also reviewed by the Transportation Director for the School Board, and he's also given off a sign of approval on it as well.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question. Is there gonna be school buses stopping there, and will they be able to come in and turn around and get back out?
Yes, sir. We have still some families living there since a long time. So they also have the kids there. They come in, the bus comes in the morning, picked up, and drop up in the same time there, too.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to declare the completion of Elsa Jane Drainage Repair Project by Pulley Construction, Inc. at a total construction cost of $535,000, including change order number one, in the amount of $35,000 to amend the ordinance 69 of 2021. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions?
I guess I'm the only one with questions. I'm sorry, Wade. What, what's the change order for? Yeah, either one of y'all, both of y'all?
I've added it all.
This, this took place just about the time I was transitioning in my office and Ben and him had went over with the contractor, some additional work, is that correct?
Mr. Hammonds, the, the project was put together with a pretty brief scope of work by the interim public works director months ago. Went out there, it was decided in the field that that scope of work didn't really align with exactly what needed to be done. It was proposing to replace both sides of the street, storm drain pipe, only one side of the street really needed to be done. We mirrored that, we did a little more street and added some sidewalk and patched some panels, did some other things while the contractor was there putting all of that in. So I think at the end of the day, the city got a lot of bang for the buck on that street.
Yeah, I understand.
Given, given Ben patch, patchwork, let it run all the way to the end of the street.
Into the street. I understand, you know, any, any job, you're, you're more than likely gonna have a change order, but you know, one of my goals moving forward is, you know, we limit, you know, it's more work on everybody when you have a change order to limit the amount of change orders that we have on, on jobs going forward.
Sure. On this project, no construction plans, nothing. This was, this was an emergency. We need to get it done. So it, it wasn't a real formal process to begin with. It was a solicitation for quotes, quotes came in and, and anyway, a complicated deal, but I think at the end of the day, and Wade's done a lot of work to make sure that, that all of the items that needed to get done out there got done, sealing, cleanup, all that mess. So I think at the end of the day, you, you got, you got a lot of, lot of bang there. It was a big project.
Yeah.
The subsurface storm drain system out there was in pretty poor shape. Some of the pipe had been patched with street signage and on and on it goes. So it needed to be done.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending the 2022 sales tax capital improvement budget to provide an appropriation of $66,000 to replace the wireless systems for City Hall, Public Service Complex, Public Safety Training Facility, and Civic Center. First reading.
So move.
Second.
I talked to Bill. He called me about this. Bill is sick today. I think there's gonna be somebody from his department there.
Jeremy's here.
Jeremy's, if y'all have any questions about it. You might explain just a little bit about it, if you don't mind, Jeremy.
I'm Jeremy Peeler, working the highest department. Thank y'all for, for looking at this. Our existing wire system that we have through the coal complex is over 15 years old and it's, the equipment's outdated, the controllers are outdated. So we're needing to replace this because it allows a public service for people coming in for connectivity. It allows us to have connectivity around the whole entire facilities with our devices to be able to get onto our network, to access our email, to access the network for anything that we need. And helps the police department, helps the public works department, and we wanted to see about roping in the facilities for the civic center because their system is fixing to go out in the middle of this year and it's dead. It's actually gonna be useless because it's on a subscription type, type process. It's old, it's over five years old itself and it's something that needs to be replaced and it would help with the future processes that we're, that we're looking at to try to revive the civic center and get it back up and running. So it will allow for the administration and the first steps for allowing the public to make available for public use in the future, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a good project, no doubt. Any more questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Thank you, Jeremy. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $30,000 from the 2022 general fund fund balance to hire Gary D. Joyner, PhD, with Precision Cardiographics as redistricting service provider for the City of Bossier City, and authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached contract. First reading.
So move. Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of four police officers for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing Carol Anderson to execute the attached alcoholic beverage confection contract between the Bossier City Civic Center and Thrifty Liquor. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions for?
I have a quick question. We, we extended this to the end of the year a couple of months ago. I think it was Mr. Montgomery that asked for that so we could maybe do a bid process for other vendors. Did we complete that process? Have we started that process?
I don't think nothing ever happened on that process, did it?
This is just an extension of, of the first extension.
Extension, okay. Okay, so we're gonna still try to go out and do a bid process?
There you go.
We met with Thrifty just to kind of tell them some concerns and then, but we, our contract ended in December and we just needed to have, we had some events coming up that needed, so we just kind of extended it till we have conversations and see what the next step is.
Very good, thank you.
I got one, Carol. When, when we use Thrifty, I mean, just like the event last Saturday night, I know they have a set fee that they, that y'all charge through here, but I mean, are, are they making all the money? Is the civic center making some money too on that?
Yes, we get 30% of the profit of one thing. And that was one of the conversations we had. We needed to get a little bit more detailed on their inventory and what they bring in and what they come out. And then when they report to us, you know, a little bit more details on what's happening with that. So, but yes, 30% of their sales.
Okay.
For each event.
That's good, Carol.
Anything else?
Keep it up. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of two police officers for the Bossier City Police Department. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions?
Okay, I'm sorry. The, just did four. Is that, was that filling something and now we got two more? What is?
Yes, sir. And they're gonna, they've already submitted another one, I believe, for next time as well. As, as they people resign and leave, they present these to us.
Chief, you wanna come on?
Deputy Chief.
He's been here all day, too.
And we got one more. You can say if you want to.
Yeah.
Deputy Chief McGee, is this, are y'all anticipating? I mean, I know, you know, I know people are always going on the drop and then fulfilling their drop and then retiring or y'all, are we looking at fixing to have a huge turnover within the, I mean, I know you can't ever predict that. People quit and I know y'all had one last Friday quit. And I mean, are we fixing to have a huge turnover? Because I mean, I know the timeframe that it takes to get people hired, get them in the academy, get out of the academy, go through the FTO program, you know, it takes, I mean, it's almost a year-long process before y'all are back up to your, your manpower.
I don't know about future turnovers. With people being on the drop, we don't anticipate anyone retiring within, I don't think, the next two years or so. The untold story is, is, you know, the state police and other agencies are often, you know, fishing in our, in our pond, you know, trying to get.
We train them, they go somewhere else, everybody wants them.
Be a part of their, their staff. I, I can't predict that for you. We do have a few people that are on the drop. Does take about a year from the date of hire to through training to get them back on the street. What you see here is people who have either resigned or retired recently. And I think that's all we have forthcoming for now.
Well, which I know.
As far as police officers are concerned.
Another city, she just said that y'all have on the next agenda coming.
I think there is, I'll have to go back and verify.
Well, if those are approved, will those all be able to go into the same academy?
They should be. It depends on the hiring process and what our list looks like, for who's eligible. Depends on our eligibility list. We don't just want, you know, we don't want to hire people just because they're on the list. So they go through a rigorous vetting process.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions? Chief has left the building.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
I didn't pop, it didn't pop up on me.
What's your vote?
Yes. Y'all may have shut mine off now.
No, I still hear you, man.
Adopt a resolution adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for audit engagements of government agencies and the city's answers there, too. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Angela, she's here. Do you have anything you want to say about this, Angela? Come in, let us know what's going on.
This is just a form that we fill out. It's issued by the legislative auditor and we give it to the auditors when they come to do our financial statement audit. So it's an annual form that we do.
Any other questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of Bossier City water to serve a proposed commercial development airline drive in Swan Lake Road. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, counsel?
Yeah, I mean, are they, the water and sewer is already there? They're just basic, Patrick, they just tying on to the existing? Y'all might just want to sit on the front row when I'm here.
Yes, the, we've got water and sewer there and in order for a development outside of the city limits to use, to utilize the water, the resolution from the council is needed in order to approve that. And so that's all this is there.
Are there any, I mean, are there any impact fees or anything like that for them tying on?
I believe there is impact fees and that's all handled through and they agreed to all of that at the time. Yes, sir.
Yeah, anything outside of city limits, we have impact fees.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any more questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accounts clerk, too, in advance of a retirement in the customer service department to allow for sufficient training of a replacement. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve Patrick Wesley as the joint representative to the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission. Appointment effective January 1, 2022, and expires December 31, 2023.
So move. Can I go second?
Second.
There you go. Jeff, do you know Patrick since he's on the sports commission now? Oh, y'all haven't met him? Patrick's not here, is he? Any questions from the council, from the audience?
I, I got one. The, I know the City of Bossier, we have numerous people that are appointed by the council that serve on different stuff, the pork commission, Cypress Black Bay, all the, it, it would be kind of nice that these people that we appoint and so that they come and maybe once a quarter and give us an update, what's going on, where our money's going, what they're doing.
But this is our appointment right here.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
And Mr. Bohannon.
Spreadsheet, an Excel spreadsheet, something like that from Mr. Free before he turns it over.
Now, this, this person is a joint appointment between the, the City of Shreveport and the City of Bossier. Mr. Free and Mr. Harvey, I mean, Mr. Free and Mr. Bohannon, I think, are the city's appointments.
Yeah.
Yes. Carol, do you know who this person's replacing?
Billy Montgomery?
Billy Montgomery, replacing Billy Montgomery?
So what'd you say? It's a joint appointment between us and Shreveport?
Yes, yes, sir.
And the parish.
And the parish.
I wonder if that's Patrick, he used to be on there for, for a long time. He's a, he works, he works at Spar and, oh, yeah, he's, he's a great guy. He referees games and, yeah, he's good. He was on there for a long time initially, too, when we first started.
Any more questions? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Are there any announcements?
We have a meeting after this one. We have a meeting after this one.
I know. We're adjourned. Let you stay for the next meeting.